Good afternoon, welcome to the Tuesday afternoon meeting of the B O C C. Three items on the agenda today, we have a discussion on the planning commission. We have public works and then Emily, I'm gonna move the assessor right up front because I think this is pretty straightforward and and we can get this done so you don't have to sit here through the whole thing, you good with that? What we have is an agreement and I know you've talked to us about this before, maybe just give us a brief deal on it.
This is just a contract with a new attorney, we talked about it in executive session about current litigation. So this is just the contract we talked about previously.
Okay, so alls we need here is a motion and approval and you're set to go?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the new agreement as has been presented by the assessor.
Okay, motion on the floor, any questions? I don't see any hands.
Emily, it says that the lawyer is a, it works for a forest garvey?
I think it's Foster Garvey.
Foster Garvey, yes, that's right. Is that, is that a firm that you've used in the past for these?
I haven't, the county has used the firm before and they were vetted through the P A's office as a special, there'll be a special deputy attorney, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I'm amazed at the, the rate.
You think that's? Yeah. The other items we had, I brought up a while ago, some thoughts on changes in the, in the planning commission and I, and I talked about it last, was it last week at B pack, a week before, something like that? So I'm bringing it up to a workshop and I want to preference it because I don't have any, I think when I talked about it in B pack, one of the planning commission folks were there and it sounded like she felt like I was attacking her and I, so I want to, I want to preface this, I don't, I've never really spent any time with any people on that commission, I don't, I, I think they're all, all fine, I don't have anything against any of them, I just in, in the period of time that I've sit and watched it operate, I've just identified where I think we can be more efficient with that and so that's where this request comes from and it's really, there's two parts to it, one I think is, is fairly easy, I don't even know if it takes code change, our attorneys would be the final deal of that, but right now, B pack does the planning stuff, obviously, they look at developments and they, they do all that which proper role, they also look at all what I, I consider legislative type things, ordinance changes, policy changes and then recommend to us and, and my, what I'm suggesting is we reverse that, that those type of things come to the B O C C, I believe a lot of them can be handled fairly quickly and we can move that process along, it, it seems to me we've, we've spent seven months on one that if it would have came our way, we're wasting staff time, they're spending seven months trying to work through a policy with the planning commission and then it comes to us and if we have issues with it, then they're working on it some more and it just seems, my colleague calls it latency issue, I call it an efficiency issue and I think we can improve on that, so I'd, I'd like to see the legislative type issues, the ordinance changes, policy changes, make their way to the B O C C, we still retain the right to, if we get into it and we say, hey, this has some issues that we think need to be hammered more, they can be referred back to the planning commission, it doesn't take them totally out of loop, it just changes the loop that if it's, if it's pretty straightforward, we can get it done, we meet weekly, they meet monthly, we can get some of that hammered out, so that, that's, that's number one, the second part is in nineteen sixty-one, when this was formed, it was formed with nine commissioners and as I said at B pack, I, I get it, there was, we didn't have computers back then, everything was probably paper, there were probably drawers of documents and things were laid out on tables, I get all that, these days, things are more efficient, you have a lot access to a lot of things electronically. So I'm suggesting that, and we are at seven commissioners at this point in time, we've had a district one resign and a district two resign. So I'd like to see us go to seven, two from each district and in one position be appointed by the B O C C, it can be a department head, probably the natural choice is department head over building and planning, but it doesn't have to be, it can be a department head within the county. And I believe that leads to some efficiency issues too, because over the, the months, what I've seen, there's kind of a information disconnect between items that we may work on and items that they're working on and, and I just think if you, you have that, that link that if that is noticed, that some of that can be corrected and, and some of it can be worked on so there isn't such a disconnect, I just think it, it would speed the process along, so what that would look like is, is if, if we did that, we've already had one resignation from district one, we've had a resignation from district two, so there, there's no adjustments there. In January, a district three position comes up and that position would be replaced with a department head and we'd be at our, our seven, so that, that's, that's my suggestions and, and open for comment and the, the feedback I've, I've had from the people in the building industry that I, I've chatted to have been fairly positive about speeding things up a little bit.
You said there were three things?
No, those were the two.
Just two?
Yeah, those are the two items, I, I thought we could adjust a little bit and, and make that process work a little, little better for the public and actually for staff, I, I see him working two sides and doing different things on two different sides and it just seems like a waste to me.
Well, one of the, one of the most important and difficult tasks we have ultimately is is ascertaining the limits that we place on private property uses. That's always a constant balancing act and a juggling act. And because we want to maximize people's property rights to the greatest extent possible, but your rights end when you take somebody else's away, I think we all get that. But you also used the word efficiency, which does raise a red flag, because efficiency means you quickly make a decision without and and we're dealing when we're dealing with property rights, I think we have to be very careful about being too efficient. Because that then you trample on people's rights, we have to have full opportunity to review. So I think the virtue of a process that has plenty of folks in the role of reviewing these these battles between different conflicting rights is is not a bad thing. I I do agree with you that the way it's been developed, it seems to take forever to get anything done. And so somewhere we have to, we have to reach the right kind of balance, we you know, just there's there's the other little saying that justice delayed is justice denied, if you're trying to come up with a just allocation of rights, you know, not making a decision, that really restricts some people, so. We have the building and planning advisory committee, which is pretty much designed to allow those in the industry to have an impact. Which I think is appropriate, they're the ones that are most directly affected by the rules and regulations that the department tries to to take out or to to enforce. The planning commission though is supposed to be our eyes and ears out of the neighborhood, we're only three. And and some of these really critical issues of what what kind of neighbors do you get to have or what kind of controls do you have on your neighbors? I I get a little nervous when you when you cut it back. And I'm not sure that having nine commissioners is what's causing the inefficiencies, I think the inefficiencies of processing requests comes elsewhere and and sometimes that's a matter of of management in a department and we've certainly had a turnover and a challenge getting getting the right folks in and having past practices that act as a stifle to initiative to bringing about some some creative changes. I I just don't want to be so efficient that we're 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 moving too quickly in this balancing act between competing interests. So you know, and I appreciate the fact that that you're looking at the situation with a different set of experiences, which is absolutely it's absolutely important. I just want to be very careful that we we don't trample on property rights and you know.
Well.
We we gotta do things better though, I agree with you on that, absolutely, there there needs to be less time taken for making the decisions, but.
I would love to see it move from a snail space to at least a turtle space. I'm not asking for for leapfrogs here and 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 I can always send it back if I don't understand something, but I'm 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 fully capable of reading something and understanding it and making informed decision and and we're the ones that 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 make it in the end anyways and I I wouldn't have to ask them how many property rights they've taken away over thirty years that some of them have been sitting on that committee. I I think we're we're the face of the public and I just I just think this is where the buck stops and I'm not afraid afraid to put on my big boy pants and make a decision and and of course, it's at the pleasure of of this board where we go, but that's where I would go.
Yeah, there's some definitions are important and I think property rights is actually a bit hard to define in an absolute sense because we're not isolated ourselves, the other term is if efficiency has to be defined, it's just not taking more time or taking less time, it's just doing things such that as you do a hindsight view, you look back and said, you know, I got this job done in three days when it previously took me eight days, well, at least there what you've nailed down is the starting point and a defined endpoint, I was happy with the endpoint, but it took me much less time, that would be a that'd be efficient, or it took me less, a fewer dollars, less employee time. So I'm I'm gonna go at it slightly different route there, the difference between nine and seven is something I'm happy with there. Then it said is applicable if we understood the makeup of each of the people on the board so that there would not be any overlap, any any oversight. I don't mean oversight to look at it, but we just looked over, we we didn't get everything. And so and then fully knowing and having observed them, I don't think we lose anything, I think we actually pick up an opportunity to have a little more discussion if there are fewer people. So the other one, the first one, I actually think it would help us if, Mister Chairman, you took an example of one, a contrived example, you know, taking us through where the board works on it and then another one where the board just says, oh, that goes to the to the planning commission. It's I'm a little hazy there.
Okay. Well, I give you one of each, we had, we had them sit in and and we eventually made the decision on it when they wanted a zoning change, we had remember the builder came in zoning change out on Carlin Loop? That was appropriate to go to planning commission beforehand because they they're the ones that keep track of all that that kind of stuff and then it came to us with the recommendation for a zoning change. I wouldn't change that that route, even more, we're the final ones that make the decision, that's okay, I wouldn't change that route. This, we have a hearing coming up on the twenty-first on the flood plain and this was started in in May, if I remember right and it was brought to us and it was said FEMA guidelines for this are this, and this is what the national guidelines are. Callis County has had an overlay above that of this. Where do you want to be and our our talk was well, we'll be on FEMA guidelines, we decided FEMA guidelines would be it if 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 a person wants to do something different, they can make that decision themselves or or builder wants to do something different, they can make that decision themselves, but we weren't going to impose things beyond, I mean, there's in my mind, there's enough rules already, I'm not going to impose additional stuff. So I went to planning commission and they insisted and passed out after seven months of discussing it, th- this is one of the things, they only meet on a monthly basis. We sit on a weekly basis, that they want to maintain the three foot above in the in the hundred year flood plain for the safety. Well, I have a real issue when you're defining somebody's safety because everybody else is paying for the few that maybe don't make the right decision or maybe get caught in a decision that didn't work for them and everybody pays for their safety. I'm not in the business, I I'm not willing to take away rights for the just for somebody's safety, I'm not talking about illegal stuff, that I'm talking about you notice everybody, everyday decision making, oh, well, that person doesn't have the ability to make this decision, so everybody needs to abide by this. It's not the way I work, I'm not going to take somebody's rights because somebody has trouble making a decision. And so that type of thing, I thought should have came to us, it it's, we were we were within all the guidelines, we had, we there wasn't any other guidelines, we needed, we knew what the federal guidelines were, we know what the state guidelines are and all the building. If we want to go above the guidelines, we can make that decision, we know from testimony that we don't have to adopt the state guidelines, but we have to enforce it. So it's pretty clear to me where we stand and I can make that decision, I can look at that and make a logical decision and move.
Yeah, excuse me, so how the inception of each of these, so in the first case, that would be driven originating from the planning commission?
No, it comes actually, I think it started, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think these things come through building and planning and they make a decision what where it goes.
Okay, so they would have the burden here to decide whether to
Right.
come to us or to planning commission.
Right.
Now, let's say they came to us. Well, let me back up, in 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 the first case then they were, they are talking about a a changing of the zoning, if you will. So they they would go to the planning commission, the planning commission would do its work, come to us, just like before.
Just like before.
In the in the other case, in case two, that's one where the customer would come to us first aboard or go to building and planning, who would advise us that there's an issue on the table?
Does that? Does that usually start with somebody requesting to us? And then we refer it to you?
It would be based on application coming in or if the board directed our department to revamp a code or a policy decision or administrative determination, then it would come to our department and we would move that path forward.
So in the case where it require, like given a short plat, would that come before us or?
That's done within our department.
And then a long plat?
Large lot comes same with our department, but if it's a rule or
So Tracy, when you say it starts with your department, that is because at some point in the past, the board of commissioners have said you've got that administrative, yes, take care of those administrative issues, that's more administrative than we want to deal with. And then you decide whether to kick it up to the planning commission or handle it yourself.
Depends on the path forward, yeah, what's in our code.
Now, how do you see if, like, we we recently have been contacted or involved with developments of multiple dwellings and traffic issue is always an issue and ancillary stuff would I had counted on the planning commission advising us on stuff and I I wished it were a little clearer, but so if I'm filing for a large, large lot, do you go to the planning commission for that?
Large lots are five acres or more, those are done administratively through our department.
Which, pick one where?
The Silver Lake one, that's a good example, that would come to the board, it's a housing development, so it would go to planning commission and then to the board.
And that would not change under, that wouldn't change. And if I'm in the Silver Lake, I'm the developer, how do I know that? Because I'm going to start with you, right? Okay, so the burden for some decision making is going to be in your hands. I'm, this would be difficult to put a definitive ordinance together, I think, because we'd have to define cases and I wouldn't know how to define them.
It frankly, it's all very well defined by ordinance currently, I'm sorry, it's all currently defined by ordinance, it's all it's all mandated by code as it is today. So for example, the planning commission here's subdivisions, subdivisions are five or more lots, any one of which is less than five acres. Yeah. Short plats are administrative, they're they're up to four lots, large lots, because they're between five and ten acres, they're exempt from R C W fifty-eight seventeen. The county's elected to pass a large lot ordinance, but it's an administrative code and so they stay at the administrative level. Any subdivision, urban or rural, meaning five or more lots, any one of which is less than five acres in area, goes before the planning commission and then to the board.
Yeah, so you would say everything else other than what you just described goes to the board?
So that that's a good description what you just gave.
So subdivisions go to the planning commission, any legislative actions such as a proposed change in ordinance, a new ordinance, comprehensive plan amendments, that all goes to the planning commission and then to the board, things such as variance, special use, campground binding site plan, those would go to the hearing examiner and then we have a third.
Do we go where?
I'm sorry? To the hearing examiner, oh, and so and then we have the third tier of administrative processes which stay within the department, they don't go to either board or commission.
So you've you've heard the chairman and some of us have kind of muttered along that the process seems to take too long, particularly when we're dealing with the the big codes, the comprehensive reviews and and those ordinances, what would you all suggest we do differently? To speed up the process, because you're dealing with the clients
Right.
that are bogged down waiting for the changes to be official.
So with with the specific example regarding the flood plain, that does have some back history on it and it largely has to do with D O E was involved and we were working closely with D O E so that that ordinance
Ecology or?
Yes, Department of Ecology.
Ecology.
And so we were trying to satisfy their requirements with respect to the to the state's model ordinance, the the two and three feet respectively between the tuttle and callis and all other water bodies, that was just a carryover from the old ordinance and it left it in place. When I found that, I brought it to the attention of the planning commission and what had happened was they wanted more information and so there were a series of continuances where they sent us back, they directed staff to go get additional information on the number of properties affected, why it's there, the impact of it being removed or reduced to the to the federal standard of one foot as well as both the Army Corps and FEMA expressed that they had data available justifying those numbers, those numbers never came forward. All all agencies involved have acknowledged that one foot is the mandate, so we're perfectly within our within the board's purview to to make it one foot if that's the desire of the board, so that's been settled. But it was a long convoluted process, with respect to making the planning commission more efficient, they've expressed a strong desire to workshop items in a outside of the formal public hearing process, so a public meeting to to invite comment, get additional information, so that way when we do take it to the formal public hearing that they're well versed and they they know what the issues are and then they accept the testimony through the the open record process, excuse me. And because they only meet once a month, that that adds an additional month to to any given process, in addition to that, if if they seek additional information, that sends it out another month and so what should take a single hearing, a single open record public hearing can get stretched into two, three meetings very easily in front of the planning commission before the board ever hears it and so that's if if we can curtail that and in my mind, the best way to do that is staff needs to be prepared when they present an application to the to the planning commission and you give them specific direction, because at the conclusion of the planning commission, there's a couple of different options, they can recommend denial, they can recommend approval, they can take no action. Staff can then take that to the board in any form and so we can present it to the board and say, planning commission didn't provide a recommendation, I recommended denial, staff can also provide a recommendation to the board contrary to the planning commission recommendation. So again, back to the flood plain example, the planning commission has recommended the two and three feet, staff can provide an alternate alternate recommendation outside of the planning commission, say we're staff's recommending one feet, one foot for these reasons and then the board would then decide what to do and they would adopt their own findings justifying their their decision. decide what to do and they would, uh, adopt their own findings justifying their, their decision. So we, we have, uh, quite a bit of discretion in working with the planning commission. We just need to be more direct within our department and I believe we, we have that direction now to, to guide the planning commission and, and to keep them on track. And that hasn't occurred in the past.
So do you think if you bring that to us, that I wouldn't be able to understand it?
You absolutely would, but that's just been the, the mode.
We, we've morphed into this process that we've done for years.
Exactly.
And I've read the code.
Yep.
It says we may send stuff to the planning commission outside of the plats and stuff.
That's correct.
So it doesn't have to go that way. I'm trying to un-morph some of this years and years of, because we've always done it that way. I mean, I, I've looked at these kinds of things for forty years, sitting in the, in, in my industry and, uh,
It, it really doesn't take a monumental shift in current code. It's just a shift in policy and direction.
That's the way I read it. It's not, not a code thing, other than maybe the makeup of the commission from seven, because that's written in the code, but the other is just a policy, how you want to do it.
Correct.
So at, at some point in time, we'll have a discussion on the flood management change.
The floodplain ordinance is coming in front of you on November twenty-first. It would have been next Tuesday, but there's no quorum. Um, so it's November twenty-first and the flood hazard mitigation plan, excuse me, the work group is getting back together on November fifteenth to try to take out those chapters that reference climate change and to streamline some of those, those sections before it gets brought back. So that, where, that's where that one is sitting right now, the one that's been tabled on your agenda.
But the one about raising the minimum?
The minimum flood, base flood elevation is coming to you on November twenty-first.
And, and that would, the, the national guideline is one foot.
Correct. And that's what our staff recommendation will be in the staff.
Previous, and the previous standard was three feet?
Three foot, two foot.
Three feet for the.
And that changed, and that change happened when?
About after the eruption, I believe.
After the eruption, yeah. Okay, so going back to the way it was before the eruption is what you're desiring to do.
Based on current information we have and FEMA guidance, yes.
Just keep in mind, the scientific research we've heard through the collaborative is that the tuttle is second only to the Amazon in the amount of sediment sent out into the larger body of water. Um, I'm suggesting maybe we're not through with the eruption consequences yet. But I guess that's for a different discussion. Um, I, you know, it's one of those interesting situations where week in, week out, we are very much aware of the federal rules and regulations that come down our way. And it's, I, I, I have to say that here's a situation where, yeah, the federal regulation doesn't care one whit about volcanoes because the rest of the country doesn't have it. Here's a situation where we need to pay attention to our own local needs and, uh, so, so that'll be a push. I mean, that'll be a difficult issue to, because we know very much the amount of stuff that continues to come down that river is probably not, makes it not very timely that we say, oh, we don't care. We'll go back to the, we'll pretend we can go back to the way it was before the eruption. And I'm just not, you know, ninety or eighty-five percent of the people that I represent, well, they're protected behind dikes. So I, I guess that's, um, why I'm a little bit more sensitive about flood capacity.
I had a cogent thing to add, but trying to follow you carefully, I largely have an asked, um, I am comfortable with adopting both of the chairman's suggestions as to the difference between one feet and three feet. Um, I sat in on, uh, one of the planning commission meetings and there was this big discussion about the floodplain map. And, uh, that left me pretty much uncomfortable because that's just a map that will change tomorrow and I'm going to build my house here today. So I, I don't think there's anything you can sink your teeth in there. But the issue now, I'm, I'm recalling, we're, what goes before the planning commission should be, uh, should not be a policy decision. And when I hear all this, the distillation is, I think we should zealously guard a policy from this board. The public can unelectus anytime they want, well, at election time. And so it then becomes a philosophic dis- distinction. And this one foot and three foot thing is a perfect example. Um, and we will face that decision on November twenty-first. But for here, it serves as a very good illustration of the point of distinction I was trying to find between the, uh, between approaches. I'm, I'm, I'm happy with, uh, with your suggestion. I, uh, I don't know if you need a motion. You will need the ordinance change on the number of.
You want to, uh, work with the attorneys and see what needs to be changed?
Of course.
It'd probably be wise to review anything they, they say.
Doug knew this discussion was in the works. Um, I let him know where you were kind of heading. And so we will work with him and see what we need to bring forward to the board to change. It's probably not something that happens overnight because I think one of them's a code change, but, um, we'll still have to advertise it and take it to public meeting or public hearing, but, yep. And then in the meantime, the two open positions, do we want to leave open until the code change happens and then?
That'd be my preference.
Yeah.
But.
Okay. We'll work with legal.
Okay.
Thank you.
I heard Public Works. Appreciate your, appreciate your, your, your help yesterday.
You're welcome. Mike Moss, Public Services Director. Uh, we're going to start off with a miscellaneous item of a contract. Actually, let me get my glasses on here. Amendment number one, you was Foster Garvey. I believe he's very similar, but Emily was working here with the assessors office with you guys. The very first item you had today at one thirty. Um, Sean just passed out the amendment to you guys. Foster Garvey is our attorneys we work with for the landfill. And our current contract ended on September thirtieth of this year. Uh, working with the PA's office, this came from Doug Jensen to, uh, extend the, um, agreement to October thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. You see, there's no dollar amounts on here. There's no rates. It's an as needed contract. It's extending their initial contact with, contract with the county. Certain years we use them a lot, certain years we don't use them much at all. Uh, this past year, just so you know, up to date for twenty twenty-three, we've used them a little bit over nine thousand dollars. But we expect to use them quite a bit here, coming up with a, hopefully a PUD contract and other landfill MSW contracts.
Yeah.
So they, they looked through those for us. Uh, we use, the two attorneys we use most through Foster Garvey is Steve DeGiulio and Jay Donovan. So.
So this is an extension and you're not asking for rate increases?
No, the rates aren't there because per year they may increase their rates. Right now, Steve DeGiulio is at seven hundred and fifty dollars an hour and Jay Donovan is at four ninety-five is their current rate.
But last year, we only used nine thousand dollars worth of their services?
Yeah, this, this year up to, uh, currently for twenty twenty-three, nine thousand seven hundred dollars. Last year was about fifty-one thousand dollars. So. So Doug asked me to bring this forward to you guys today, asked it for the chairman to sign since there's only one spot for signature. If you guys are, uh, agreeable to that, then we'll put it on the consent agenda for November twenty-first.
The gentleman here is the same one as on, on the other, uh, agreement.
The one that Emily gave us.
Yeah.
Exactly the same name that's signing it.
We're, you're still going to be with Jay or Steve, right?
Correct, yes.
So we're, we're paying these fees because we're going with the really well-established experts.
Exactly right, yes.
Okay, and that different, different attorneys than I believe that, that, that assessor's office is using now. We're still with Jay and Steve at Foster Garvey.
Well, attorneys kind of specialize, don't they?
Very much so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm okay with that.
Great, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to staff to continue the workshop we started a few weeks ago on the five-year facility plan, maintenance facility plan. I think Sean also gave you a copy of this. It has Plan A, Plan B and Plan C. So, uh, this is a plan that we talked a little bit about that the main difference of all these plans, I believe is only item number thirty-one, which is the HOJ HVAC repair. And we're going to let them go into discussion. I'll have Will take my spot up here. Thank you.
Hey, um, I've been nominated to go ahead and start. So again, this is the same Savannah Clement, Deputy Director of Public Works. Um, right before you, you have a five-year plan for facilities. Um, this shouldn't be any new information on here. Everything's the same that we presented from a couple of weeks ago. I believe we also gave the board a draft, actually a couple of months back. Um, what we're here to do today is workshop this yet again with the board. If they have any questions with line items specifically, um, any questions relating to prioritizing or costs. Um, and then, then at the end, you know, we do have a recommendation for the board. Um, so if we can, um, maybe answer any questions or give any feedback on any items that are on here. And then we can, if, if that's okay, move on with, um, presenting our recommendation to you today. Kathy's here as well, um, just from a budget capacity standpoint. Uh, I think she's also eager for us to talk about this and get some, some board direction. So, um, first, do you guys have any questions on any of the line items that you've reviewed, um, regarding cost or prioritization?
I, I know you, uh, you know, this was at the facilities committee. I don't think they had any questions on it either, right?
No, uh, it really boiled down to what direction we were going to go as far as mainly HVAC at the Hall of Justice.
Yeah.
So.
This doesn't include capital improvements like adding the third floor onto the Hall of Justice or building new structure?
It does not include that, no.
Does it provide any, um, public defender's office fix or is that?
No, it does not include that currently.
Okay, or, or repairs to the drug court building?
No repairs to the drug court building, no. That, um, that, we call that courthouse square. And I only say that because I didn't know what that was.
And, and we own, and we own that building.
We do own that building, yes, that's correct.
But we don't own the one at the, uh, the defense.
We do not own River Suites, no. Uh, we are still working. We just did another tour last Thursday of a potential space utilization at the hall. I think I saw Ian come in. Um, we met with several, um, elected officials that day. Uh, we had the IT director there. Uh, of course, Ian, Ryan, Stacy, Sheriff was there, um, to do a, a really good look at that space yet again. Look at possible floor plans for solutions, but we have not yet come to a, a decision on that.
Uh, Kathy, is this what we were talking about earlier today? The floor plan, Hall of Justice? Yeah, I think it was she and I were, I was just in her office. She, and, uh, it's a little bit off topic, but not completely so.
Okay.
Let me first just ask about this.
Okay.
Well, could you refresh my memory on Plan A, B and C?
Sure, I'll actually let Sean do that.
Commissioners, Sean Early, Public Works.
There you go.
The first option is us doing nothing different at the Hall of Justice on line item thirty-one. We're just repairing and maintaining the HVAC at current status quo. The Plan B is the same as Plan A, except on line thirty-one. It would be us looking for a debt alternative to fund a full HVAC replacement at the Hall of Justice. Plan C would be the difference on line thirty-one would be the county finding revenue sources currently available to fund a HVAC replacement at the Hall of Justice.
In twenty-five.
Yes, sir.
So B and C, the same works being done is just a different, you're just giving us two different funding mechanisms.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So it sounded like somebody mentioned adding a floor onto the Hall of Justice?
So that's in regard to our facilities needs steering committee. Um, that is an option that's kind of been presented by our team to that committee. Uh, no decisions have been made, um,
Understand, yeah.
Right, that isn't, that was an alternate, um, possibility, yes.
I hadn't heard that before. I, I, I like to bound problems. Sometimes I'll, I'll use a silly example just to say in the extreme, like the minimum wage law. Well, how do you know twenty dollars an hour is the right answer? Maybe it should be two hundred dollars an hour. You, you see what I mean? So when I take a look at this problem, I, I think we have the big gorilla in the room. The Hall of Justice is not suitable for the court system. How do you fix that? Well, it sounds like you've done some thinking and planning about, on that. I had heard that someone said that you could not put a courthouse at the mall and that is not my understanding.
Okay, that is the feedback we did receive from the owners, um, in our conversations with them.
A courthouse in the current mall, they will build us a courthouse last I talked with them.
You're correct. That would be in the current space they have available, not future. As a staff, we didn't talk to them about future.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, so I mean, it's good to make that distinction because, um, we're facing a situation now where we have somehow to make the Hall of Justice wo- work for us or replace it. Uh, and let, let me go through that argument rather quickly. Right now to fix the Hall of Justice, you've got to fix the second floor or add a third floor. Either way, you're going to disturb ongoing, uh, ongoing court activity. Less so if you're doing the third, uh, fourth floors, something like that. We have a problem that most buildings are built to a specification that says it can take this kind of, of a load. And that's an area there where I'd be really careful about adding anything. But, but I don't know, I, do you have a, off the top of your head, what the dollar amount is?
So yeah, so I hadn't planned on doing the facilities needs today, so I'm not a hundred percent prepared for probably all of your questions, but I will try my best. Um, in our last facilities needs committee meeting, we did have a spreadsheet. You have it? Okay, do we have, we probably don't have enough copies. Um, thank you Kathy. Um, do you just want me to pass it along to you?
I just need a ballpark answer. Like I, I'm told a new courthouse ballpark answer is hundred and forty million.
Yeah, so go ahead, Sean.
Yeah, so if we were to look at a Hall of Justice, uh, that's about a hundred and fifty thousand square foot, we would be looking at approximately a hundred and forty million dollars in twenty twenty-three dollars. We also, um, proposed an additional option, which was the extension of the first and second floors to the area that has the overhang from the jail in there. Um, or a larger value than that, uh, up to sixty thousand square foot. We tried to keep them modeled at the same square footage. Uh, an additional sixty thousand square feet on floors between floors one and two, that'd be thirty thousand square foot per floor would be an approximately, uh, fifty to sixty million dollars. And once again, that's in twenty twenty-three dollars. Uh, and then we also ran a few other options, but nothing, we can go into details at any time if you'd like.
I was really hoping to come to this board with a, a really nicely wrapped presentation on that. Um, on all of the options presented, funding, um, and get feedback. Um, so I ju- I just hope that this piecemeal, you know, um, these numbers and things that we're kind of throwing out there that have been ideas that we haven't completely vetted through the group. Um, I just, hopefully that doesn't put a, a sour taste, you know, to the whole process because, um, I think we do have a lot of good things we could be doing. Um, kind of full circle, bringing that back to our proposal today, is we did have to make some assumptions, you know, especially on this HVAC for the Hall of Justice. So we had to. especially on this HVAC for the Hall of Justice. So we had to make an assumption that we'll be there for at least the next three to five years. Um, again, kind of going with what you were, um, presenting, you know, worst case scenario. If we stay at that building for the next ten years, what did, what do we need to do there? Um, and, and immediate need is something we haven't talked about in depth yet, really, other than a couple of weeks ago, we mentioned it. But we currently have electrical panels that are not meeting any kind of safety standard in that building. I don't want to hop around too much because I understand you probably have more questions. Um, we had to make an assumption that we'll at least be there for the next six months to a year. We need to identify and address that problem. That's included also, um, on item number twenty-eight at the Hall of Justice. Um, but going back to the, you know, the HVAC situation, we put this in here because we are making the assumption that we'll be in that building for at least a few more years. Um, also to sell the building, um, we, you know, to try to market it and sell it, um, with the current, you know, system from the seventies. It will be a, a feature that won't be, um, super appealing to potential buyers. Um, so tho, those are things that we did have to make some assumptions on. And I understand it is a lot of money, uh, specifically for HVAC.
We're spending close to a million just in maintenance right now.
We are.
Money per year.
Mm-hmm, so repair maintenance. Um, we have been, uh, Sean forecasted, we'll spend about nine hundred and ninety thousand next year just to continue current status quo. And then moving forward, it, it lessens a bit, um, because we're fixing major problems now just to kind of, again, Band-Aid us through and get us by.
So, lots of ways to look at this that need to go a little more slowly. We, in the case where you, you, you want to maybe add sixty thousand square feet, and you're saying it's going to cost you fifty to sixty million? Okay, so do you know where you're going to get that money?
I do not.
Okay, and a hundred and forty million, that's the same answer, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we know that if we are to build those things, we're going to have to pay the full fare. What a, what a private person can build with a hundred and forty million will cost us about two hundred and eighty million to three hundred and fifty million. So when we look at this, we don't have a hundred and forty million, which would be probably the ideal solution. However, if we do something like have somebody build us a courthouse and we lease it, it's going to cost them seventy million. That leaves us seventy million to play with that we do not owe. We will have a new courthouse and we will, uh, owe seventy million, which we will be recovered by the person through the lease, lease fees. But we're still ahead seventy million. I, that argument doesn't apply to adding an extension, but adding an extension, I'm like, how do you have court in session when the jackhammers are going and, uh, and the trucks are beeping back and forth? It's just something that I, I don't think we'd be doing the right thing, although it's cheaper enough that we were seeing. But that would be a full fare fifty million versus a full fare of seventy million. And then if we sell the building, there is value there. I, I, I think even if you rock bottom sell the building, uh, you're still looking at it. Uh, I, I don't want to throw any numbers out in, in, in the public. And the thing that alarmed me earlier today was discussion that, uh, the thought of having a lease was actually dismissed by the committee. And I'm scratching my head and saying, how does that happen? And it ties in today to this because, you know, do we do Plan A, Plan B, or Plan C?
Well, Plan A would be status quo, you know, so that's not really tied into, um, anything with the Hall of Justice, your future.
No, I understand, but Plan A doesn't stand alone. Plan A says you've chosen Plan A over Plan B and Plan C. So I've got to put value on Plan B and Plan C.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Um, I, I'll go back to your statement on discounting the lease. Now, again, that was utilizing the current mall campus. That was not considering any, you know, lease to, you know, leasing a building that they build for us. I mean, that was not.
That surprises me because we had talked about that, uh, quite some time ago. And that, that was a discussion that we couldn't have the court in the mall. That was said over a year ago, probably, maybe, maybe longer. Time flies. So.
It, it's not off the table. I mean, the steering committee hasn't made any recommendations or any decisions. Um, we just met last Thursday. Um, it wasn't pulled from the idea list. Um, I would also add that, you know, I think when we got the steering committee together, it was just like, what are the needs? You know, what, what do we need? And the Hall of Justice really rose to the top because they have a lot of more considerable needs than other divisions. And they're represented pretty strong there. Um, but it's.
Look, uh, we've been doing this exercise for a long time. For, well, as long as I've been in this chair, and it's always the same thing. We, we want to know their needs, but we get these soft and amorphous answers that are very hard to deal with. We don't know what, what they actually are. We, we, we have to do a better job than just say they're going to tell us our needs. Like I, I asked Judge Basher to provide us what he wants for a courtroom. And, uh, I don't know if you remember several years back, it was going to be, we, we're going to hire a consultant to tell us, and that was about eighty thousand, to tell us what we need in a courthouse. And I'm scratching my head and thinking, why? You're the judge, you know what you don't like about what you've got here. There are courthouses all around the nation. All you got to do is pick one that you like, go ask them to hand you the blueprints, and we'll see what we can do with that. Anyhow. I, um, just a, a couple of comments on the, the addition of sixty. Uh, what we need to know also, that doesn't fix any of the issues that are in the current. So it's, it's really, if you choose that option, it's really a bigger, bigger number, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think one of the discussions I heard around the, the lease was it was triple net and that they'd only, uh, agreed to maintenance for, of the building and the, and the equipment for five, five years.
Yes.
So it, it kind of gave a little sour taste. Well, now we're right back renting from somebody and we're taking care of all the, all the stuff. So I think that's where a little bit of that, that came from. Yeah, okay, I understand that. Everything though is negotiable. Yeah. And, uh, and when you've got a seventy million dollar cushion there. Right. You can probably do a reasonable job. There's another thing, uh, and I, this is a little bit of a diversion, but the mall is, is right now is not attractive to anybody who wants to come to Calis County and open up a business. They're going to go to there and they'll say, something's wrong here. I don't understand it. But if we were there as, as an anchor, lots of people would be advantaged. Or lot, lots of entities would be advantaged. So there is some intangible there, but I'm perfectly happy to see some penciled in tangibles. So for the moment, I, I, I think we do Plan A, but but because even do you know what it would cost to reduct everything in that building?
We do.
That's.
That's part of the information we had, um, the Milleg company provide a couple of weeks ago. If this, they provided several, this one, if you remember, and.
Don't remember.
Sorry, I have it again.
I should apologize.
That we did have, um, some estimates on potential options of an entirely new HVAC system, which is where we got a lot of the numbers that we're utilizing, including current repair and maintain numbers.
On Plan B and C?
Yep.
And is it a believable plan?
I believe so, yes. I wouldn't present it otherwise.
So how are they going to handle the hot side versus the cold side of the building?
Uh, they're actually going to have independent, um, thermometers, or help me out here. Go ahead, Will.
Yeah, so, so I can expand on that a little bit. What it is, it's, it's a variable speed system, uh, and it's a cassette. That's what it's called. It's, it's a cassette in the ceiling. I think that's the word that you were looking for. Um, it's, it's almost like its own, uh, independent heating system. So if you wanted your office a little warmer and, and Dennis wanted his office a little bit colder, uh, there's some variables speed inside each independent cassette that allows more or less air to come through. Um, I have hot and cold spots in that building everywhere we've noticed on each tour. Um, and I, I don't know why I can't explain that. Um, also to expand on that, uh, this is completely replacing the heating and cooling system. We are working with a fifty-two-year-old boiler that would need replaced, uh, sometime in the very near future. Um, and also, uh, identified in the engineering report, uh, we are working on one, a one motor large air handler for that system as well, uh, which is a single point of failure. So, um, that I was identified in the issue as well. This, this plan to replace it would also mitigate that.
Yeah, one, one of the reasons, um, still I would be a little suspicious. I, I could be off the base, but when you're trying to push air through Plana, it's going to depend on how, the result's going to be a function of the pressure changes going through there. I turn my thing on and all of a sudden he gets hot or cold. Uh, that's not uncommon. And it costs a bloody fortune to make sure that you don't end up with that, which is sort of what the problem we have. We have a fifty-two-year-old boiler, and by the way, you're young. Fifty-two is not so old. But, 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 but that's a different issue, so.
And another issue with that system, uh, that this would resolve is we're running on pneumatics, uh, which is, uh, we're running on this building with pneumatic thermostats as well. Uh, there's air leaks all throughout the lines. The lines are through the walls. It's, uh, almost impossible to identify which, which lines are leaking air. Um, so this would also mitigate that. So it's just one of the many challenges that we have at that building.
Yeah, new stuff is going to be far more maintainable, yeah. How do you find a leak in, in an electrical circuit? You can do that with a T D R and it'll tell you that it's fifty feet from here.
So it's easier, I think, to go just three pages from the back of your booklet here, because the pages, unfortunately, they're not numbered. Um, so three pages from the very back, uh, highlights what Milleg, who is that design bid build company, um, came up with as potential solutions and options for us, uh, based off of their assessment of the Hall of Justice.
You've probably said this before. Who else have they done? I know they've done others.
Um, other like county buildings. Lewis County is one of their current projects, so they are retrofitting.
One they're working on?
Yeah, so they're retrofitting, uh, their jail, which is attached to their court building right now. So you can, uh, see there's an orange box, um, highlighting of one A through one D, which is, uh, currently their options they gave us. Um, based off of the information in the research that we've done, we were looking towards the, um, one A option, which is an air source V R F, uh, heat pump system, which is where we penciled in these budget numbers for in that option B and C. And then also.
These are different options, A, B, and C.
Correct, so op, okay, let me tie this back. I was really not trying to, to make this, uh, super confusing, so I apologize. Option A is.
Well, actually, you know, I, maybe I'm going the wrong way. Would, the, the, it's up to the chairman to decide if I'm out of order or not on.
Oh, no, that's fine. I just, I'm trying to be less confusing and sometimes I struggle with that.
Okay.
So if you look at option A, we were using the one D pricing. So they're saying, you know, based off of what we've spent on average to repair and maintain, if you want to keep status quo, this is how much it costs, and then we factored that into proposal A.
Okay. Okay, so that's just projected cost over just maintenance for what we've got. Okay.
Correct.
Just as a side note, you know, it's the Longview Company that built the Lewis County's jail that's attached, yeah, Gilnut Construction. Remember, he was a good friend of mine. Before my time.
Um, I know Judge Basher also had him some, um, this is another interesting side fact, some historical drawings from the architect who did the Hall of Justice, who's also local. Um, so he provided some of the, um, architectural background of the Hall of Justice, which is kind of what, where that idea came from to add on, because back in the, you know, seventies, they designed it to be able to add on in the future. Now whether or not those designs are, would pass current code is a question, but. So there's kind of just some side info as well. The architect was pretty local.
Yeah, I, I, I may be a little hasty. I, I, I think it's, you've got to pencil in. That one seems more promising. I think you might be able to do construction and still run the courts. I don't think you can do an up, upper floor and, and do that.
We would agree with that. We don't think that's possible either.
Oh, okay. Uh, so whatever pencils in. It's, whatever we do is a huge bill, and I'll be real honest with you. I don't know if, if the voters would, I mean, on a total new construction, didn't we estimate seven to ten mil a year on that, Kathy?
Closer to ten.
Yeah.
Or more in future dollars.
Yeah, it, it we effectively going to end up paying that. We couldn't go and get the bond ourselves because then we would be paying the full fare of a hundred and forty. It's like the other people have to go out there, put their neck in the, in the noose, and they won't do that for free, and they shouldn't do it for free. Yeah. I got some numbers from them, just as for the mall, and it was not unreasonable. It was, I think, under a dollar and a half a square foot per month. But on top of that, you've got the common area fees and who knows what adds up after a while. We would do our own internal maintenance, but that doesn't solve the Hall of Justice, and that's why we, that's the one we really should solve. Yeah. What you're, you're looking for direction from us is status quo, or we, we put some improvements and try and
That's cool.
Improve the quality of life over there type thing.
Right, I mean, so, you know, either way, we're spending next year, you know, about nine hundred thousand to a million dollars. Whether the board, you know, as far as budget, for budget reasons, um, if we set aside for twenty twenty-four, a million dollars, um, that would still satisfy if we want to stay status quo, or if we want to look at potentially, um, doing these HVAC updates at the Hall of Justice. So I guess what I'm saying is we could kind of punt this a little bit. Again, I, I feel like it's premature to come from a facilities needs steering committee angle and say this is what we should do. Like I said, we had to make some assumptions in, in these proposals, assuming certain things, staying there for at least a couple of years, et cetera. So, you know, if, if what this would be an option to at least budget for next year, the repair and maintenance of the nine hundred and ninety thousand, well, up to a million. Uh, and then, you know, let the board make a more informed decision on what direction, um, you guys want to go moving forward. Because either way, next year, it sounds like it's going to be a million dollars, no matter what option you choose.
So is that saying you, you, you're advocating Plan A on this sheet?
I, I actually came in today wanting to propose Plan B, um, which would assume a new HVAC system at the Hall of Justice. Uh, would also, again, um, making assumptions that we would stay there for at least the next three to five years.
And when we say we expect to stay there for the next three to five years, even if we look at a new facility with the engineering design and construction years to get that building into shape, built out, furnished, and ready for a transition, we expect that period of time to be at least three to five years.
The private sector will build it much faster.
Absolutely, and much cheaper. I, I, I don't disagree on that front at all. I still think we have options out there. I still think we're pausing from a facilities, again, committee standpoint, on, you know, possible funding options. Commissioner Dahl had mentioned, um, that at our last meeting, that there's still, you know, so maybe some other funding sources out there, um, that we could explore. Um, so I don't want to put the cart before the horse on that. I don't, um, want to make. Um, so I don't want to put the cart before the horse on that. I don't, um, want to make any recommendations from, from that point of view. Um, like I said, I, I was coming here to propose plan B, uh, for the reasons that I mentioned.
The plan B is that, uh, one C on the page three.
That it would be one A.
One A.
Air source VRF with heat pump option.
Okay, because I think the only use, well, yeah, they're all good, they're all solutions. The best one is going to be just coincidentally, the more expensive one, the distributed ground source heat pumps. Because your environment in that building is very different depending on where you're standing, what floor you're on.
Yeah, and that actually, uh, provides the most cost reduction out of all the options on that last column over the utility cost reduction.
Oh, uh.
Your, your recommendation, one, yes, one C, yes.
They're estimating savings of seventy-seven-nine?
Mm-hmm.
In energy costs.
Correct, energy costs.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm blind.
So on any of these, if, let's just say we said one C, I'm just throwing out an example, and then down the road, we decided, hey, we can add in addition to remodel. Does any of this have to be tore out?
No, all the mechanicals for any addition would be just for the additional area.
So you, you, you don't do, you're not just spinning wheels here and then we got to tear it out anyway if we go one route?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, unless the board wants to demolish the building.
Well, I guess that's the alternative there, yeah.
Sorry, that's an option.
We'll let Commissioner Mortensen push the plunger.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I, I don't like destroying things, so I, I would not at all want to tear the building down.
And, uh, just one item I wanted to clarify on one A, B, and C. There's no actual air moving through the vents. This is all coolant running through, uh, lines that are then just cooling or heating the air within that room itself. So we're not running air from the basement up to the third or second or first floor. It's coolant that's then being, um, either cooling or heating the area that needs that heat or cooling.
That's on this page.
Or B and C, yes, sir.
Yeah. Because that's very different than the E, E, EEM one C solution.
So that would still be a heat pump solution, so.
Multiple heat pumps.
Yes, sir. Mini heat pumps in there, and that would circulate a coolant through the building that would go into the cassettes with, within each office. At that point, the cassette could pick either heating or cooling. There's no air moving through the vents to make up air to keep fresh air in the building.
It's just kind of like an on-demand water system, like.
Yeah.
It doesn't heat it in the tank and then push it out. It, it takes the water to the.
I, I would describe it as a very large mini split system.
Yeah, okay.
I want to be the first one in the line. Rice?
Well, if, if the units are in individual offices, when it gets to the unit, then it decides how hot or cold it's going to.
Right.
Push the air is what I'm hearing.
Right, based off the thermostat.
It's not pushing a bunch of air from the, the basement, and the first office is good and the second one is not so good.
Correct. So there's no air moving through the pipes at all.
But you'll have a, you'll have a common, uh, any, uh, uh, a common freon, whatever it is you're doing.
So, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a trunk and branch approach.
Right, trunk and branch, fine.
Okay.
Did I ever tell you about the trunk and branch in Chennai, India?
No.
We lived about six houses off, and a nominal two-twenty or two-fourty would be around a hundred and eighty at our place.
So you wanted to be first in line?
You want to be first in line?
So I take it that three different options abandon the, uh, the, the geothermal mechanism that's across the street?
That's correct. We did ask, uh, Milig to take a look at that and the functionality. Um, Will, do you want to kind of explain their feedback on that? They essentially said if we wanted to use it, um, I think we'd have to put some significant amount of money into it to utilize, and it wasn't the most energy efficient of our options for what we'd spend. So I don't know if you have anything else to add? Okay. Still there.
I didn't follow that, sorry.
Okay.
So, so the system was designed originally for a thermal heating and cooling system. And that empty s, and it's all in the empty lot across the street, right?
Yes.
So they were drawing power and, and cooling it off.
Mm-hmm.
But my assumption is it was pretty technical and the experts didn't do the job to ma, keep it maintained. So it's filled up with junk that interferes. I'm guessing, I don't know, it doesn't seem to be working very successfully now. Which is why I asked if there was any, any hope for.
Yeah.
So we could sell that lot and, and make some money to pay for the repairs, right?
Right, or.
Let's not say that S-word yet.
Or utilize that really valuable flat, you know, city parcel, um, for potential parking, um, or, you know, expansion of the hall, or, you know, if we could utilize it or sell it. Are you following?
Yeah, are, are, are you thinking we will use the geo, geothermal system?
No, we will not. We were saying if we abandon it, which would be what we would do in, in any of these proposals, we could utilize that space for other things. Because right now we cannot utilize it at all because of the geothermal, stuff in there. Wels, thank you.
Yeah, I'd have to understand a little more. I, 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 I've never gotten a blueprints or whatever it is, but I know we didn't hold the contractor to the terms.
That's my understanding. That was before, I think I started at the county.
Is it, i, i, do we know, uh, is I, I don't want to take your time up on that, but there is something interesting there.
But my impression has been the delay, the deferred maintenance program adopted years ago, um, pretty much ignored doing anything with that, and it's just gotten worse and worse ever since.
But it didn't work from the day, first day, I'm told.
I don't believe it did function correctly.
And, and I, I would, I would have really seriously challenged the assumptions, like, do you have any idea how deep the pipes are? And what goes through there?
Not off the top of my head. Um, to give you a little bit background, um, in reading through some of the folders, I, I think you are correct. I don't think it's ever worked as it was supposed to. Um, there was an issue of water draining in to the river. Uh, then you couldn't do that, um, per code. So then they changed the wells. They couldn't get to some sort of a depth. Uh, that's my recollection, but it never made it to the full design plans. I don't think it ever worked how it was intended to. Will, what year was that installed?
Seventies. When was, when was the courthouse, when was courthouse built? That's when they started it.
Finished to live twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve.
Wrong junker question.
Yeah.
So you need some direction from us.
Well, I, you know, I do, we do. Um, but again, I think there's some compromise there and, you know, maybe if the board can allow us to at least allocate the nine ninety to a million dollars, which again would just allow for repair and maintenance, if that's the direction, or have some, I'll call it seed money, uh, to move forward with HVAC purchase. I think that's really all Kathy needs to prepare a budget, um, for the next year, next two years. And we could always come back and we can give a full presentation on this Milig study. We didn't get an opportunity to do that a couple of weeks ago. Um, but I mean, I don't want to make any hasty decisions or request, you know, a, a significant amount of funds from the board if there's still, you know, a lot of questions about directions, so.
So the more we spend next year in, in the budget, the less we can do for other things.
Absolutely, that's correct. Yes.
At this point, are, are, are you looking for us like the nine hundred thousand do, do, dollars for the electrical panels? That's just something you're going to do regardless.
That is something that I do believe we need to do and move forward on next year, really as soon as possible. I do believe it's a sa, uh, health and safety issue. Uh, I can expand on that.
I, I, I hear a lot of complaints, uh, because everybody plugs in their heater, right?
Uh, this actually extends beyond that. Um, these panels were the Federal Pacific panels that were installed when the building was first.
Oh, yeah, I understand that. I'm just saying, in addition, you've got to get better power distribution within the building.
That's correct. Although, Will, do you want to expand on that proposal at all, the nine hundred thousand and what that includes, or we can provide that? We can provide that as well.
Yeah, um, but, but on the panel that, that needs, it's, it's the main transfer switches that come into the building from the three legs from the PUD. Uh, those Federal Pacific panels and, and, uh, electrical distribution are known for, uh, not the, not turning the transfer switch. That's one of the known issues that they have. Uh, if you remember last year, I think we had three or four power outages. One time it shut down the courts. Um, PUD had lost a leg, which then, uh, our system wouldn't, wouldn't transfer. Uh, we had to have electricians come in. This is, this is another one of the hazards that would mitigate that.
So you're recommending B?
That would be my recommendation. However, again, to me, option A would still allow for us to set money aside and come back to the board with, you know, with different.
Going to do that anyway.
That's, yes, the money, the money will be there anyway. So between option A and B, uh, we'll at least have some funding. But if we, if the board decides to go with status quo, we would just, you know, come back and do a different presentation to see if we want to do some different choices. I don't know, Sean has anything else to add?
So on option B, you actually see, uh, no dollar figures in twenty twenty-four?
On line thirty-one.
On line thirty-one, that's correct. Uh, because we would be, uh, using some sort of debt mechanism. And so we wouldn't start three payments until twenty-five and forward. And that's why that's estimated there, like a locals program or something through a state that has an, an advantageous interest rate program.
So you're thinking we go out for bond issue?
Not bond, uh, a, a, a debt function of some sort, uh, through the state. For, because of the value, it wouldn't make, uh, probably fiscal sense to go out for a bond. We look, utilize one of the state programs instead.
Mm-hmm.
Similar to what we did for the morgue.
Will they do that at a fixed interest rate?
I believe so.
So one nice thing about the bonds, you at least can predict your future.
Yeah.
And I think the last locals program, uh, went out about three and a half percent. So it's still fairly reasonable.
Well, I'm okay with B.
I'm okay with, I'm okay with B.
This is where we call for a do-over on the Hall of Justice.
Yeah.
I don't have grounds to argue either way, so if you guys think B, I'm okay.
I. Yeah, I think reality is, w- we're probably going to be in there a while and we start making, if you can, I'd like, I would, and I'm, I would assume you would go out and if they're retrofitting, uh, Lewis County, go around and make sure that it's working like they say can do, or whatever county they, they've done. I mean, just verifying some of their, their claims. I, I don't have a reason to doubt them. I don't know them, but it's just good business and it's right.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this isn't signing any con, you know, obviously you know that, but this isn't agreeing to, you know, Milig specifically. Um, so we would be more than.
At this point, we're trying to decide how we're going to put it in the budget and how to move forward. So I think what you're hearing, Kathy, is, is try and build your budget around B, and we'll go from there. So changes can always be made.
So this ended up being our promised last budget workshop, right?
Quick, quick.
She's catching on.
Yeah, plan, plan B uses the cassettes?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Does that help?
That helps a lot. Thank you. Thank you.
Aren't you glad you were prepared?
Well, I didn't catch that, sorry.
Aren't you glad you were prepared?
Yeah, all over the place, prepared, but prepared nonetheless.
Well, I hope we just don't get anybody complaining, because everybody has mu, music now in their office space. We're installing cassettes, right?
But.
Do they have Bluetooth capability?
If I just date myself.
When you get people comfortable, all of a sudden, things aren't as bad.
That's true.
Did we have any other?
We, we have a miscellaneous.
Uh, unless you guys have, I don't.
Yeah, I've got, I just want to, uh, both, uh, you are planning to go to DC?
Yes.
To, okay, so.
Yeah.
We, we need something that public sees that we approve or did not approve.
I, I haven't, I haven't seen the, uh, the registration yet.
It just opened last week.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll take a look at that, but my main, I know they have a function and that's fine. But my main purpose is I want to spend some time with our David Hodges. And, uh, learn some of the contacts, and that's the same goal I'd have for Kelly, because she'll be around here longer than all of us. Yeah. So I don't, I haven't picked out quite, I know it's over their weekend, but I don't know if a, an extra day on the front or an extra day on the back.
Well, you know, we need three months notification, don't we, Dennis?
Yeah. I don't blame you.
Really?
Okay. With that, we'll adjourn. Thanks for participating.